All the order of staff and going to leave.
Definitely.
It's where I say to improve all of your standards, automation, individual, justice.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Yeah.
Something to add?
Yeah, I'd like to add RSU 21 Board of Directors meeting under Committee and Board Reports.
Help?
Nope.
Nothing else, then motions will prove the agenda as amended? No.
Yes.
Motion made seconded, all in favor? Okay. Public forum for public comment on any non-agenda item. Have something for our chief?
Oh yeah, I got a bunch of stuff. Um, so our compressor went down back in early May, uh, which fills our SCBA bottles. We thought it was going to be able to be repaired. Uh, we've talked about this through the budget process and CIP. However, um, they're unable to repair it. Uh, they don't make parts for the compressor anymore. It's over 25 years old. So what I'm looking for is some guidance and we can do it through this, the CIP process. The, the funds that we have there. Um, if we replace just the compressor, it's going to be around 37 to $38,000. Um, if we go for an entire new system, except for the, uh, tanks, um, which will reuse, it's around $56,000. Again, the system's 25 to 30 years old. Um, if we go with the replacement of just the compressor. So there's two components, there's really three components to the compressor. It, the, the fill station, there's the compressor, the fill station and the tanks. We can reuse the tanks. That's not a problem. Um, we could, to save money, we can reuse the fill station. We do need a new compressor one way or another. If we go with a new compressor, we're limited on the brand that we can go with. I have two vendors that sell the same brand, so they're going to be in competition with each other. I'm probably not going to get a third vendor. Um, because it's just the area of, you know, their, their coverage area of who they represent. It's only one particular brand. If we go with an entire new fill station and compressor, we can get all sorts of different bids. Um, just looking for guidance on that.
The, the timing couldn't have been worse. We were hoping that we were holding off on that, uh, compressor and our, our goal was to combine it with our, uh, building construction package. And that way we could have done that as well as the, uh, tower and so other, other items that we would have required. So a little bit early for us at this point, but, um, yeah, if, if I had to make a, a recommendation to you folks that I, as I would, um, when it came to the construction of the building that we would add that, I would, uh, I would make a recommendation that we take the funding from the TIA, the TIF that's been set aside for public safety and building construction and purchase that item as part of the package that we would eventually would have done.
How? How, how much in TIF funds?
There's over a million dollars in there right now.
So we could, we could purchase a full system using the TIF funds?
That is correct.
And it would make sense to purchase a full system at this point rather than just piecemeal it, right?
Yeah, I mean, either or, I, I'm okay with either or, um.
I think what it does, it provides the option of getting more than just two bids.
Right.
And two bids from the same, same manufacturing vendor. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility.
We can't combine a different compressor manufacturer with the fill station. Right? It's like putting a Chevy part into a Ford or a Chevy motor into a Ford or vice versa.
I, I like the idea of getting the whole system, uh, and using the TIF funds.
Yeah. Any other comments? We have some comments.
I, I, I agree with Dan. I think that if we're going to do it, we need to go out and get the whole new system and go out, go out for bid on the whole new system.
Okay.
That would be my, that would be what, how I feel about it.
I agree with it.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want, would you like a motion on that? Or we've just all agreed?
Yeah.
You've all, you've all.
All agreed that.
So you're all pretty well agreed and, you know, as we, as we, uh, get the, obviously when we open the bids, we'll explain what, where the money's coming from again. And then as we put the building package together, if it comes up, then we can explain it and express it again.
How are you feeling? Thanks now, chief.
Uh, we're going over to Bedford.
Oh.
And of course it couldn't have come at a worse time because the system went out like the day before we did, uh, two evolutions of live fire training over in Hollis. Then we had a fire on Old Post Road and we've gone to a bunch of mutual aid fires. Could, it really, it's just like, oh, well, you know, so I'm filling up bottles over in Bedford at one and two in the morning. Just is what it is. So.
Can, can a bunk hop out with any of them?
They can, but, um, I have access to Bedford. I've asked the chief to be, to help us out on this. He's, he's good with it. It's no big deal. Um, again, I work over there, so he's willing to help us out. So I can just sneak in, fill the bottles, leave whenever. Um, there was mention of the four iPads. So the four iPads actually come from an EMS grant. Uh, we got a grant for $15,100. So there's, um, the, we're updating all our iPads for all the apparatus. Um, and also, uh, buying AEDs, um, some spare EMS equipment. Um, a rhythm generator so we can practice rhythms and utilizing our, uh, new life pack, uh, 35 for anybody that we bring on and that type of stuff. So that, that's all coming out of that, um, how they do the accounting on Wendy's end, uh, um, it, it's a grant, so we're trying to utilize the grant before or at the end of the year to get that all taken care of. So all the books can just zero.
How much was the grant?
$15,100.
So that covers the iPad and the rhythm generator?
Yeah, it's covering, um, like we got a new scoop stretcher. We got a new stair chair coming in. Um, two new AEDs, which we'll put on the fire apparatus. Um, the iPads, uh, vacuums, the spare vacuums, uh, splint set.
I think some of those, yeah, I think some of those purchase orders are in there tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then what else? The other thing, there was something else that's keeping my mind right now. And then the other thing, um, it probably already went through the warrant. Uh, we got another grant for around $2,700 for particulate hoods. Um, so we'll be taking care of that as well.
For what?
Particulate hoods. Um, they're like the Nomex hoods, but they're updated. They, they don't allow particulates to get onto our skin or they limit the particulates getting on the skin. It's from MMA. Um, it's a safety grant. I applied for it last year, got the same thing, applied for it again. So now we have spares. Um, so.
Okay.
And then, um, I don't know if it made the agenda that the, the, um, service vehicle bids came in. Um, is that later on or can we talk about?
What, on, on what?
The service vehicles.
Yeah, I have them here. They're on the, they're on the wa, you know, warrant, uh, the agenda to discuss and open.
Just wait.
Okay.
That's all I got for now, I guess. Got any questions for me?
Are you coming along?
Yeah.
Are you coming along with the, uh, vehicle training? I see a bunch of vehicles getting.
Yeah, so, so those are actually weren't training, uh, props. I've got to get Rundle Auto to come pick them up. Those were demo vehicles for E-Tools. So we had three vendors come in, uh, with E-Tools, so electrical, uh, ex- education tools. So they're battery operated tools. Um, and that was part of the CIP. Um, so we went with three different brands that we were interested in and we're, we're going to put out the bids for those shortly. So.
How did that go? Training go good or?
Uh, went good. Um, one vendor actually gave us some tips, which was great. Um, the other ones just kind of showed off their tool. They're like, here, here's our tools, you know, just a regular demo. Um, one vendor broke their tool and doing the, doing the education, but, um, yeah. So it gave us a good idea.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you.
Yep. It was great that Rundle Auto provided for us to be able to do that.
Well, thank you for those grants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah. Okay. Approve the minutes of June 9th.
Move approval as prepared.
Motion, motion's been made and seconded to approve them. All in favor? Okay. Yep. Not one abstaining?
Yep.
Committee and board reports. Dan, you have a RSU meeting report.
Yeah. So RSU 21 School Board Meeting, Monday, June 16th. Uh, they had advertised the meeting to start at 5:00 PM. Um, they did, um, a couple of the new members that were there, they swore a couple of them, they weren't all there, but they swore a couple of them in. And then we actually started the meeting at 5:30. Uh, so there was a bunch of awards that night. So, uh, the first award was the civil, uh, wasn't the first award, but, uh, I'll just go down in order here, excuse me. The Patient Hunter Award. Um, that went to Tiffany Bates, uh, for her, her work that has, that she's done. The sportsmanship award that went to the RSU 21 Athletic Trainers. The special achievement award went to the Resource Officers and Local Fire and, uh, Police Department. And the Civil, uh, Rights Award went to Greg Smith, the High School Social Studies Teacher. Um, they recognize Claudia Sayer, Gail Smussen Spofford and Diane French as directors completing their service. And then also the student representatives, Molly Lechance and Maddox Rawls, and they weren't there. Of course, the school was all done for them. And then the, the three new directors renewing their turns were Brittany Gerth for three years, Mandy Cummings for one year and Rachel Kennedy Smith for three years. Um, and then we're the new one. So, and then the new ones, the new members that came in from Kennebunk are, um, Arianna, Estantheu, Brian McGrath, both of those for three years. And for Kennebunk Port, Dominique, and, uh, as I just mentioned, Rachel Kennedy Smith, we did her membership, not membership, but, okay. Uh, consent agenda items, let's see, the resignation of Brendan Fody, fine arts teacher at KHS. Resignation of Laurel Vashon, self-contained special education teacher at MSK. Resignation of Margaret Phelan, math teacher at the high school. Resignation of Molly Dilworth, Instructural and Assessment Officer for the district. Nomination of Lily Salino, Elementary Arts Teacher at KES, salary of $59,923. Nomination of Anne Hayes, Elementary Arts Teacher, KCS. Salary of $55,487. Nomination of Laura Lee Fleishman, Art Teacher, MSK, salary of $57,534. Nomination of Taylor Forth, Grade Four Teacher at MLD, salary of $60,384. Nomination of Allison Metz, School Counselor at MSK, salary of $57,534. Nomination of Catherine Wells, Special Services Preschool Teacher, uh, Preschool Speech Therapist. Salary of $72,731. And nomination of Denise Bondi, Music Teacher at MLD, salary of $80,254. All of those were approved. Superintendent Report, they had two reports, the kind of end of year reports. You know, I always update on the, not always, but when they, when it happens, the TN, TNTP and the WEA reports. Uh, those were very lengthy. I don't, I didn't write down all of the information, but I just kind of capture, uh, the gist of everything. So for the TNTP report, that is really for teachers support, uh, teachers and support staff surveys. Um, that was, uh, that took place in the spring of 2025. That report is done throughout the U.S. and they were 3,650 schools surveyed through this particular company that they use. Um, these are really to help work, um, improvement efforts for the schools. They had a total of a 40% participation rate. Um, MLD was at 68%. KES was down to 37% and that kind of drew everything down. They had a pretty high percentage rate at all the other schools, but they went too fast. I didn't get to write them all down, but, um, so, um, they're kind of happy with that. What they do is they have different domains that they, um, that they go through these, these surveys. And, um, over the last year's surveys, uh, seven scores have decreased a little bit and five scores have increased. Um, one of the, uh, questions that are asked is a teacher planned retention. And, uh, they were at 16% below national average. So that's goodness. That means that the teachers compared to national average, teachers are, are planning on staying. And support staff, that was 80% below, uh, the average for retention and that had a 54% participation. Uh, let's see. So the next steps for the TNTP is, um, uh, district leader debriefs, and they've already done that, school leader debriefs, they've done that. And, uh, they're, they're working on one-on-one support. And the board had a discussion, big discussion on how to increase the participation rate. Um, they felt that, um, even, you know, the schools that were at 68, 70%, they felt that there should be more of a, uh, participation rate. The next item was the NWA report, NWEA, and that one is student-based. Um, that was a report, uh, from spring and, um, when they, the last time that they did it, they had a, um, uh, 66% and they finished at a 78% reading level. So these are all good numbers. Um, the national average is 72% for reading. And all the grades were above national average. Math improved spring to spring. Reading improved, uh, spring to spring. Uh, the projection for math was a little bit below the strategic plan, but it was all real good, uh, real good reports. So, uh, the, the school board was, was very happy with those results. And it shows that all the work that they've put in, um, is, is starting to pay dividends. Uh, admin will be working throughout the summer with the various administrators at each schools to work on their school improvement plans and their coaching and evaluations. Let's see. Facilities report, Leslie just kind of gave, uh, an update on the meeting that Keith and I attended. Um, Megan talked about the superintendent search advisory, uh, update. Uh, first round of interviews were done. Um, this week they're having three executive sessions and I'm pretty sure that those three executive sessions all have to do with the new superintendent. Uh, intimate interviews and stuff with the, with the new superintendent candidates. Uh, Leah talked a little bit on about the Communications Committee and, and mostly focused on consistency and clarity. There was no finance update. Claudia had a bunch of, um, policies for, uh, first, a couple of policies for first read and a bunch of policies for the second read and all of those were all approved. Under new business, uh, Matt, the chair, talked about the FYI 26 budget timeline with the failed uh, vote on the budget. Um, he had presented some dates on when to try to get that done. And there were a handful of members that felt that, um, it should be the current board that goes and works those issues. Um, other members felt that, um, it's best that we, they go through the whole, you know, not rush into it. Um, but I don't think the board fully understood that if they take their time, what effect this will have, especially on escrow accounts for folks. And I think you're going to talk a little bit about that, right Keith?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Um, and, uh, let's see, we, we, uh, we broke out at 9:55 PM for executive session and I didn't hang around for that. So it was a long night.
Chip, you were there. I don't know if you wanted to add anything that maybe I missed, but.
You know, most with the staff, uh, there was a question about why, uh, administrative support was included. Was the, for a director, for secretary. Administrative assistance, uh, there's no reason.
In a support staff survey, yeah. Yeah, I don't remember what the answer was to that, but.
All right.
And I don't agree with you, but I don't think. Still talking about her. Sure, school understands the impact of the calories.
Other timelines?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to talk about that more here. Um, all right, anything else? Any questions on that? And let's go to the managers' report, your annual appointment.
Yes, uh, several, several things I've, uh, I think I put in your packet. Uh, like to have you confirm, um, my annual appointments for animal control, Assistant Animal Control, Building Inspector, Code Officer, Electrical Inspector for Commercial, uh, EMA, uh, Director, um, uh, Fire Chief, Freedom of Access Officer, uh, Health Officer still open at this point. Uh, Plumbing, Register of Voters, Town Clerk and Tax Collector. I've provided them all and I believe you have a copy of it. Um, would like to, uh, get a motion in a second for those, uh, appointments.
Okay, who's the EMA Director in Civil Emergency?
Um, right now we'd be falling onto the Fire Chief and we really haven't, um, uh, nailed down exactly who we're going to have in that particular role yet.
Okay.
Same thing with Health Officer, generally fell within the, uh, Fire Service.
Yeah. Any questions?
I just corrected spelling of Ryan's name on the plumbing inspector.
Would I do spell it wrong?
Got L A Y. It's L A W, I think, right?
Oh, yeah.
You can say it later.
Yep.
Well, let me make those corrections and then I'll bring it for you folks to sign at your next meeting. There's no, I'd like to have got them done, but I want you to sign the document and I want it to be clean. So I'll make those changes. Uh, the other two I had were, or the other four I had was, um, I'd like to move forward the, uh, for the Planning Board, Rich Genong and Zach Shapiro to be reappointed to the, uh, Planning Board. Along with Paul Chansky and Ray Reimer onto the Appeals Board. I think, I don't need any signatures, uh, but I do need an endorsement of those, uh, a confirmation of those appointments.
I make a motion, we approve Rich Genong and Zach Shapiro for Planning Board, Paul Chansky and Ray Reimer for Appeals Board.
You have a second?
Second.
Second. You got that?
Yep.
All right.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, I've seen that, uh, Mr. Shapiro's house is for sale. Is he remaining in a Rundle resident?
Uh, as I understand, he is, um, um, I indicated to him that he had to re-up and he had no objections to it. So my assumption is he's staying in Rundle.
And if he moves out, then he won't hold that position anymore.
That's correct.
He knows that.
Okay. All in favor? Yeah. One, one abstention. Did you abstain, Chip, on that?
Um, I want to say, uh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Did you abstain?
I voted no.
Oh, he voted, oh.
Uh, next I have the, um, uh, Select Board's payroll warrant. As you know, uh, from time to time, we have meetings that, uh, that occur that are on off payable warrant. Uh, payroll warrants and, uh, this, uh, policy provides authority to one member of the board to come in and sign so we can release checks. Seek a motion in a second on that and I'll have you sign it.
Move approval of the payroll warrant.
All right.
Policy.
And Phil seconded that. All right, any discussion? I mean, normally she calls me, but she could actually call anyone, any of us. All right. All in favor? Okay, you got it.
Yeah, I'll set that on down.
Yes.
Uh, the next is that's moving on down is the, um, Select Board's, um, uh, Code of Conduct. Um, what I did, uh, with this particular document is I think I just updated from selectment to select board. I think the last time we had done any adoptions to it were a while back when it was still selectment. So I've made those changes and, uh.
Plus you need a space between town and all.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
Um, so I appreciate, uh, maybe a motion in a second and get these signed as well.
Move that we sign the Code of Conduct?
Yes. Yep, I'll have it here and then we'll just put it with the clerk's office so we have it as a document.
I second his motion.
Okay, that motion's been made and seconded. And all in favor? Okay. And you want to check, but I think the Select Board members agree.
Okay.
I don't think that needs to be appealed again. Ready?
Should we wait? Do we make the changes before we sign that?
Uh, no, because the, uh, the changes would be on the, uh, first page and not the second where the signatures are.
I'm sorry, what, what is the change, please?
Um, I had a, um, a spacing, uh, piece on the top and
Read town and all.
And Velma thinks it should say agree instead of agrees.
Like board members agree. Do adhere.
Don't you want to move the word town to the completion of the first sentence? Whether or not the outside be.
Oh, 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 yes. See that, put the word town over here.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. And those changes are all on the front page, so.
What was, what was he saying?
All right.
Uh, the paragraph.
Yeah, yeah, I know that, but what Tom was talking about.
Right here, take the word town, put it over here. Yep.
Yeah.
As that's moving down, I'll, I think Tom's the last one to sign it. So, uh, I'll move on to, um, yearly, you, you folks try to establish some, um, some presence on, uh, committee assignments. Um, I've provided you a document that, um, it just has two areas that we've pretty much, um, had, uh, all board members, uh, participate in. That would have been the budget, budget board deliberations as well as on the, uh, Rundle Fire Rescue Building Committee. Uh, the other ones that we have are our Planning Board, the RSU 21 Finance Committee and the RSU 21 Directors Meeting. So, um, whatever your pleasure is in terms of, um, one or two members, uh, double teaming that or, uh, whatever your pleasure is.
I think in talking to Chip, that he and I would both like to do the RSU Finance Committee.
Okay.
I'll stick with the Directors Meeting.
Anyone who wanna throw their hat into the planning board?
I'll do it.
Okay.
They, they may have some robust meetings coming up with, with that new passage of that, uh, most recent law where the state is taking a little more control over.
I guess they will.
Yeah.
It's a mess.
Yeah, I provided that information to the, the planning, uh, the planning office today when I received it from MMA as well as, um, made sure that, uh, Sam had a copy so they can begin some, some guidance there as to how we're gonna manage that.
Two thousand and three, was that a different one?
No, it was a new one just signed by the governor over the weekend.
Right.
Okay.
And it's got all sorts of, I, I read it today and my head's still spinning.
Yeah, it was pretty, I, I, I think what I took away from it, it, it continues to try to, um, remove local control from, from, um, ordinances and zoning and building decisions, so, which is troubling to me.
At least that's the residential.
Right.
Yeah, put me down for the planning board too, I'll, I'll act when I can, you know, I try to pretend when I can, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that covers it. I will type this up and then, uh, get it to you folks so you know who's contacted. And finally, no action required until, uh, till your first business meeting in, um, July, but, uh, I think I've got the sequence for chairman, vice chairman and secretary, uh, for the next upcoming fiscal year, which would be good, uh, Tom would be chair, uh, Dan would be vice chair and then, uh, Chip would be filling in as secretary. Um, both Chip and I had those, had a discussion very quickly about the secretary's positions and I, I told him unless I show up, don't show up, he doesn't have a lot to do, so we left it at that.
Words for me.
Yeah. Does Phil interested in anything? Need to ask.
Yeah, I don't take it for granted, Phil, I just, over the years, you haven't, uh, you haven't taken any, so, I don't, that's why.
Just to make sure.
The smart one amongst.
Yeah. I mean, if we vote on, we can vote on these tonight, that way at the, the beginning of the next meeting, we can start right off the bat.
You can, if you'd like, sure. Do you wanna do them as a slate of officers?
Yeah.
Just do it as one?
Just do it as one.
Yep. I would then have a motion to, to accept, uh, Tom as chairman, Dan as vice chair and Charles or Chip as secretary.
Tom, do you, do you accept?
I'll think about it.
Yeah. Um, well, actually, if we're gonna do that next time, I won't be the chair at the time, so I can make the motion to, to name Tom, Dan Lick as chairman, Dan Dubois as vice chairman and Charlie, Charles Bassett as secretary. All righty, all in favor? You got it. All that means Chip is that we move this gavel from here down to the end of the table.
I just hope you don't have to use it the way that.
Well, I thought.
Moderator had to.
He thought he was gonna break it.
I, I did too.
I heard my ear.
Yeah.
And I don't, you know, Keith may have, may have, you know, been easy on you Chip, but as secretary, you gotta take a lot of notes.
Yeah.
Uh, you know.
Okay, let's see what the RSU 21 budget failure and process forward for Arundel.
Um, yeah, I had a, I had an opportunity to talk with the, uh, school board chair last week. Um, and we discussed, um, the process on the failure to pass the budget and that's why I provided in your packet the statute on, um, on the, uh, on the budget process. And, and I think what it, it tries to do is tries to at least provide the municipalities when they're setting the tax rates as some sort of definitive number to proceed with when the time comes. So in other words, um, again, the, um, the school board has, I think it's between ten and forty-five days to, to get to a point where they have their deliberative session again where folks come in and they present a budget. Uh, the budget then gets, gets an up or down vote and changes can be made at that meeting. Once those changes are made, there'll be a number that will then be placed on a ballot to be accepted by, uh, the municipalities, uh, in total. Um, I think what our question was at that point is what happens if that fails? And if that fails, as I understand, and I read this statute, that the number that was confirmed at the deliberative session will be the number that will be moving forward for tax setting purposes. So, um, there seems to be a process involved. Um, um, I'm hopeful that, um, that the school board is working diligently to go from an, um, eight percent increase to something that, uh, the voters, uh, may accept. Uh, and then we will have a firm number as opposed to one that may or may not, um, be firm when we set the tax rate. So, um, that's the process as I understand. I think it's pretty straightforward. It, uh, it may be a little confusing if, um, if it gets defeated again, how people may react to the fact that we may be collecting more money than we actually may need to operate. Um, uh, because, um, we'll be setting the tax rate on that deliberative, that deliberative number regardless, so.
I, I, I have a few questions out of, I have a take. Once the town sets a tax rate for the fiscal year, is there any ability to change to amend that for the second installment of taxes?
Not that I know of, nope.
I assumed that was the answer, but I
Right.
I needed to ask. The way I'm reading this fourteen eighty-seven, it sounds to me as if, uh, our tax rate would be based on a budget approved at a regional school unit budget meeting.
Correct.
And validated by a referendum. So they have forty-five days to have the regional budget meeting.
Right.
If they pass a budget, i- if, if we, we, the voters of the three communities pass a budget, how quickly are we able to turn around, uh, and have a referendum on that?
They, they will, uh, they've got ten to forty-five days to wrap up their, their whole process, so.
No, no, they, they have ten, forty-five days to have the, the regional school unit budget meeting.
And then they, uh, what do they have, um, what is it, fourteen days after that to, in order to have their ballot question answered? So.
It is fourteen days.
Yeah, I, I think it is, but.
Are we, are we able to, to have?
But regardless of that, at that point Chip, we can set the tax rate. Because whatever number they agree to at that deliberative session will be the number that we can use to set the rate. So we don't have to wait for a ballot decision by the district in order to, uh, set our taxes.
Okay, so, so you're, this, this wording approved at a regional school unit budget meeting and submitted to the voters. You're, you're saying that submitted is the key.
Well, what I'm saying is, yeah, yeah, whether, whether they approve it or disapprove it through the ballot question, we will have a number from that deliberative session.
From, from the regional school.
Deliberative session.
Voters of the three communities together.
Correct. As they, as they have that open, uh, what I call an open town meeting for the school board that they can, the district meeting, they can go in there and make changes.
If they don't have the district meeting before we set the tax rate, we have to set it based on what the district meeting was done.
Back in May of twenty-four.
Right.
No.
Yes.
Not, May of twenty-four.
No, May of twenty-five.
Five.
May of twenty-five, the district meeting that we just had. At the, at the district budget meeting at, at the gym, right now that is what, that's what the tax, that's what the budget is for the RSU. If they don't have another district budding meeting, budget meeting, that's what we set the tax rate on. If they have a district budget meeting prior to us setting the tax rate and it passes, that's what we set the tax rate on.
Well, whatever that deliberative session number comes out of that meeting will be the number, yep.
Get it?
So we'll have, we'll have a number.
How I read it, but I, I.
Yep, so, so I, I guess what I wanted to try to at least have the discussion on is that we will have a number. I think some of the things that we were questioning was how that process is gonna work. It seems as clear as mud to some of us, but I think it works.
So when, when we are, um, I, I would ask if we can, um, at, at least think about or explore what ifs, uh, i- if the, for example, if they manage to have a regional budget meeting within forty-five days of June tenth, which is what they're required to do, then we can set our tax rate based on what's approved at that meeting, but it's still subject to validation by a referendum.
Well.
How, how quick is that referendum?
It doesn't have to be validated by law, it doesn't have to be, all we need is to have that number.
At the district budget meeting.
Right.
It doesn't have to be approved by the voters at the second meeting. It, it'll go by what was approved at the district budget meeting.
Right, so.
Okay, I'm.
So, yeah, so even though the voters haven't voted on it, so even if the voters haven't voted on it, my understanding is that number will be something that we can use to set the tax rate.
I understand that, but my, my question is, there is still a requirement to have a referendum.
Correct.
Yes.
After that.
That's correct.
What happens if the regional budget meeting passes, but the referendum fails?
Then the regional budget number is the one we use.
Right, and then they start the process all over again.
Right.
So the superintendent has been tasked to come up with a, and they, she's already worked this, a three percent and a five percent reduction, so that's gonna be submitted to the board, um, a three percent and a five percent, and then at that point, the board will make a decision on which, which one to move forward. So let's just say that they say they picked a three percent. It goes to the district budget meeting. It passes, it goes to the voters.
With the man that's off the wall.
Whatever, 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 yeah, whatever passes at the district budget meeting. And that is what will be locked in for us to set the tax rate, no matter what happens with the, with the vote, with the secret ballot vote.
What is the deadline, and I'm sorry again, I'm, I'm new at this. What is the deadline for us to set the tax rate?
Uh, generally, we, we set it, um, sometime in the end of August. Um, is, and we've gone as late as the beginning of the September.
So they, Matt is aware of that based on discussions with you, and I had, I had mentioned something at the meeting when they talked about it. Um, and Kinnabunk is kind of the same way, the same thing. So they know and they're trying to work to at least have the district budget meeting by that time. But, so I, I do have a question.
Were you gonna play a what if now?
Well, you know, this, this can really screw up people's escrow accounts, right? So let's say, um, something gets voted on at, uh, at the district budget meeting. That's what we're gonna set our tax rate on.
Yep.
It get, let's say it gets voted down, they're gonna come back later at a lower number, but their escrow accounts, everybody's escrow accounts now, the banks are gonna force them to go to the hu- to the higher number.
Correct.
And then they're gonna be overpaying, so what happens? How do we, how do we financially fix that up with the school? Cause we're gonna have to give them a check based on, on that budget, right, on, on the.
On, on, uh, we'll have to give them a check on whatever's been approved at that district meeting, yes.
Meaning, so do they reimburse us back or?
No.
They would adjust, I would think that.
Well, if, if it's a lower budget that finally gives a pool.
Yeah, uh, no, they won't, they won't adjust us back. What they'll, what they'll do is they'll have, as you recall, sometimes they have a fund, they have a fund balance which they can use. So I, it would be my assumption that they would take that money in, in earmark it to, for a tax reduction because they didn't spend it, needed to spend it all for that year. But I'm not on the boards, right? And I'm not giving them a recommendation, so that would be my recommendation to them. You know, if it ended up collecting more money than they actually needed.
But that wouldn't happen until next year? The, this, your twenty-seventh. I, 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 maybe this isn't the venue for it, but I think perhaps the school board should be encouraged to, um, use some fund balance and contingencies in whatever they do so that, so that there isn't, uh, uh, burden on taxpayers.
Sure. So it's, it's an interesting, um, piece that we're in, but I think, I think what I wanted to express tonight is that when we're ready to set the tax rate, once we have the final commitment, um, uh, numbers, then we can, we can be able to set that.
So this, this won't affect, when I say it, it affects there, right? So initially I was thinking we would set a tax amount, I mean, we, we, we had set a mill rate and then if that budget went lower, there would be a change mid-year, but there, there will be no change mid-year.
No.
Right?
No.
So if they, okay, so, yeah.
So what we can do.
End up with a surplus.
Yeah, so what we can do is what we did this year is that we can, what we've done in the last few years, put that, have some money for tax reduction as you, the voters provided us. And then the, uh, capital reserve funding that we did, we used it there to, to keep it out of the tax, uh, tax venue too. So there are ways that we can, we can make sure that the, uh, so, that the, the, the residents get a break, so.
Hopefully it passes at, uh, at, you know, the, for this first round through it, just hope that it passes. Then we're gonna have to run into all of.
Sure.
So that, that portion of our budget, which provided for using up to five hundred thousand of fund allowance, we could in effect use that as our cushion. I- if, if we, if, if the, if the school budget is still in limbo and might go lower.
Right, the, the select board. Right, the select board has been given the authority to use that up to five hundred thousand dollars to, to help adjust the, um, the mill rate as to where they see fit.
And, and the, and the assessment from the RSU is, is roughly how much?
Um, the proposal this year was six point six million. Uh, what was a pass last year was six point two. So we're gonna be somewhere between, I would say, six point two and six point six. And I think we'll be back to six point two million, but, uh, we'll probably be closer to six four maybe. Right now it was four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of additional funding from Arundel, so if they get back to what, three percent, you were saying?
Yeah, they asked, they asked for a, two of them, a three and a five percent.
Three and a five, well, we'll see where that, where that comes.
I mean, five, five percent would be a three million dollar reduction overall. Uh, which would be a pretty hefty dip amount for Arundel.
There, there was also some discussion at, at one of the school board meetings, I think it was Bob Dominy that brought it up, that they did an audit. An audit was done after they set their budget and they found additional funds in their undesignated fund. So.
Well, they, they found.
The argument was, why don't you use those funds? But they had already set the budget, so they can't use that, so hopefully they can use, I think it was over a million dollars they can use in this budget. So hopefully they can use, I think it was over a million dollars they can use in this budget when they're going through this stuff. So hopefully that will help.
It, it actually was unexpended funds and I, I asked the finance committee early on why they weren't using estimated year-end numbers. And the answer I got was, we can't do that. I'll leave it to you all to judge that statement, but the bottom line is within days of the regional budget meeting, they came up with estimated year-end numbers. I think it was a million and a half.
Yeah.
Um, which is quite frankly huge. Uh, and, and I agree with Mr. Dominic that, that a great start would be using that to reduce the assessment on taxpayers.
So I think we've sort of brought you up to speed as to where we are with this. So it's just a matter of, uh, see what the, um, what the district, um, uh, residents want to do in terms of the, of their budget.
Thank you all for your patience with me.
No problem. Okay. How about the over limit permit project for the Days Mills Bridge?
Right. We're, we're being requested by, uh, MDOT to provide them an agreement to allow them, if needed, to, to drive or operate over our public roads, over the, um, perhaps the weight limits that may be, uh, required. Again, uh, I think this is more of a preliminary document. I don't think they have yet decided, uh, with that Days Mills Bridge construction, what roads they're going to be utilizing, if any of the town roads. But this provides them the, uh, necessary, um, approvals in the event that, um, that they will be using our, our roads for anything.
Do we have any idea on what the weights of those vehicles are?
Well, um, I'm sure Phil can tell us a little bit more about construction vehicles when they're full of freight, when they're full of gravel and, and, uh, you know, cement trucks when they're rolling over the roads and so on and so forth. So I'm sure they're going to be well over the, the weight limits if we post roads. So, and, and if you recall, I mean, we've done this in the past and the, these have been, uh, requests from the MDOT on other.
They're going to bond it anyway. So if they.
Correct.
Uh, uh, so it's assumed that we are going to require a bond?
Yeah, it, yes.
Yes, it's part of the whole package. Once, once they identify the roads, then, um, there is a, um, a bond that would have to be, um, provided by the state, uh, in the event that, uh, something occurs. I think it's all in the project construction area data that we've provided to you. They have a formula in there that they use. So what they're asking for tonight would be just to, to get and a return of the agreement signed by the initial officials, if you so desire.
Does it not include our springtime postings?
It.
If, if they're in the springtime.
Yeah.
We don't want that.
They shouldn't be on our box and hope.
Yeah. It, it may include them, Phil. I'm not sure. When I read this document.
I don't think it does.
If that's the case, I think we'd want a bigger bond. We knew that it was going to include our springtime roads and I think we'd want a bigger bond than what was normally asked for.
The main DOT will assist in determining the amount of bond if requested. The suggested format of the general construction over limit bond is attached. The suggested format for a construction over limit permit is also attached.
It says the construction permit does not supersede rules that restrict the use of public ways such as posting of public ways.
I'm sorry, where, where is that?
Yeah. Yeah.
So what is your pleasure?
Well, it's going to come, it's going to come back to us at the time when they do this anyway, right? So, so we'll know. We'll know what the, what the bond is going to be.
Well, if they, if, if, once they begin the process, then we'll know what roads they may and may not be using. And so then we can have a more, a serious discussion as to what those bonds may be depending on uh, time of year that they're using it.
This while the roads are posted. You know, in, in the.
Right. The bond may even be more than that at, at that particular point.
I, I was, I was reading this as saying that, that the permit does not overrule posting. I don't know if we can do that.
It says it does not supersede the rules.
This, this construction overlay, over limit permit does not supersede rules that restrict the use of ways such as posting of public ways. So if we post the road, it says.
They can't use it.
They can't use it.
Unless they ask permission and float a bond.
Yeah.
Right. Well, at, at, at wage point, we would require a more substantial bond.
Right.
Probably prohibitively expensive.
You looking for a motion for that case?
Yeah, I just want to sign the document, send it back to them. So they know that, you know, that particular piece is.
Built in.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept this agreement.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor? Yep. All in favor? Okay.
There you go.
Okay. And the opening of the pickup truck bids. This one was received June ninth. And it's not sealed.
Yeah, it was sealed.
Sealed.
Yep. It was sealed.
And this first one is for a Rundle Ford. And this is for two quotes for the purchase of two twenty-twenty-six one-ton pickup trucks as requested. Vehicle one, twenty-twenty-six Ford F-three-fifty XLT, price fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Vehicle two, so twenty-twenty-six Ford F-three-fifty XL, price fifty-five thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. And this gives the information on the trucks.
Right. If you, if you recall, during our budget process, we were, we were seeking, um, the purchase of two additional, uh, two pickups, one for, um, one for, uh, the fire department, which we would do away with their chief's vehicle. And, uh, um, just end up having the, um, this truck. And then down at, uh, Public Works, uh, we would be retiring in nineteen eighty-six. Three-quarter ton and replacing it with, uh, one of these, the XL model. So one would be white for the, uh, Public Works. The other one would be.
Yeah, which is.
Red for the, um, for the XLT would be red for the fire service.
Oh, okay. That's, this is the XLT. Doesn't give the mileage, it doesn't give the color.
Vehicle one is the XLT and that is.
Fifty-eight.
Which, is that the fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Fire departments, fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. It has a spray-in bed liner, a truck side with C-O-N-T, whatever that is. And it has formats. And it's a super duty.
It's a second quote from.
Okay.
We stepped in from them.
That's a Rundle Ford. That one's a Rundle Ford.
I'm just going to put that right back in the envelope. Can I just pass it down?
Sure.
Yeah.
They want to take a look at it?
I, all right. I'm going to let the respective departments look at it.
Okay. And here's, the second one was received June sixteenth. Said it was opened in error and they sealed it back up again.
I don't believe that for us.
Open says me. There you go.
I'm building the ballpark now.
Oh. Oh, that was a piece of paper I had up here. Now this is from Weers. This is from Weers. Vehicle one is sixty thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And vehicle two is fifty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And vehicle one, and there are one-ton passenger pickup crew cab four by four. And it doesn't say.
Is that the Pro model? The, yeah, I think it says on the. G- GMC has a different way they look at it. They call it, uh, GMC Pro and then the other ones are, you have to look at that.
Uh.
Yes, this is, uh, this is from Weers GMC.
Vehicle one is sixty thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And vehicle two is fifty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Vehicle one is red.
That's fire department.
And this is a one-ton passenger pickup crew cab four by four.
It's a big truck.
Uh, four hundred horsepower, four hundred pound piece of torque, gasoline engine, a dual, dual alternator capacity, four hundred amps, dual battery, ten-speed transmission, all-terrain tires, roof. Yeah. Okay.
Chief, do you want to see this?
Vehicle two. A one-ton, same thing, passenger pickup crew cab four by four. And an option one of a Fisher plow, extreme V stainless plow, eight foot six inches. Or option two, an HDX stainless plow, nine foot. All right, torno covering soft tri-fold. Uh, these are, these are good through June thirtieth because new prices are coming July first.
So we should give these to the respective departments, right? And then have them come back to us with their recommendation.
Yeah. And the, the ones from Weers.
I mean, if you're, if you're looking at these right now, I would say that, um, if, if they were, uh, comparing apples to al- I mean, if they were identical in terms of cost.
Yeah.
Um, I would focus more on the, uh, the Fords that, that we have. They, they seem, the numbers that we're getting are lower than what was with the GMs.
Yeah.
C's essentially the same vehicle. Um, and most of our fleet is Ford at this point. Um, so it, it just makes sense to me. Um, if the GMCs were coming in at the same price, then I think that we'd be looking at both of them pretty extensively, but, um.
I can guess that Ford is ahead of the duty one truck. Than the GM change.
Yeah.
Um, the, the vehicle two in the Ford quote included what kind of plow?
Oh, so both of these, the, the reason why these are ton trucks for both Public Works and, and the fire department is because um, I, when I did the, um, RFP, I put a plow as separate. Um, the idea is, is that the fire department would also get a plow, uh, for their truck as well. So like in, in the winter time, um, that would be available to respond on emergency, emergency calls, plow out the driveway so the ambulance can get in. Um, so the plow, the plow was just an option for both trucks. That was just an accessory option. They just included it with the second.
Is it included in that price?
It, it's, no, it's not included in the price. So pricing option for the following Fisher plow, option one, uh, V stainless steel plow and then a, a straight plow and then a tunnel cover. So that was just an accessory.
But is it an accessory or is it included in?
No, it wasn't included in the price. It was an accessory.
Part of the price.
It is, you know, on either one.
On either one.
Okay.
And the GMC has a torno covering soft tri-fold, um.
So, so we are, we are, we wouldn't be voting on plow purchases today?
Uh, no, I think what we want to do is let both departments take a look at them and make sure that they, they meet their requirements.
See what.
And then come back with a, uh, with a recommendation, uh, for you folks to, to decide upon.
These were actually sent out to four different vendors. Um, and we only got two back. So unfortunate.
But if we are considering the GMC, those prices are only good through the end of the month because they said the prices are going up.
That's what, that was my concern. And that's why I wanted to know whether we could vote on.
Right. But tho- those, those GMC quotes were only for those accessories. I don't think it was for the truck itself. I think it was for the, uh, uh, the accessories that you may and may not want to have them installed.
So Weers even charged more for the plow. They're, uh, they're, uh, fourteen hundred dollars more for the V plow and thirteen hundred dollars more for the straight blade. So.
I, I understand.
Fisher plows?
I understand.
Yeah, I don't get that. I understand the fire department doesn't have a plow. I, I know we have a nineteen eighty-six pickup in Public Works, but doesn't have a plow on it. That's maybe newer.
No, it doesn't have a plow on it. And I, I'm not sure that we need a plow on our pickup for the, for highway.
It was just an option.
Right. We just threw it in there as an option in the event that we wanted one. Um, and.
But he needs one.
Um, well, he.
Have one.
He, he asked for one.
Like he wouldn't ask for it if he didn't need it.
Yeah.
But he, you know, I mean, yeah, essentially it, it would be a nice option to have. My only concern and something that I would have a discussion with the chief is that, um, people operating plows is a little bit different than people just driving a truck. And so I'd be very cautious about if they had to go and, and, uh, provide some sort of access for a ambulance to get in. Um, who's going to operate that vehicles? But those are, those are things that we can work out, but.
The ambulance is four-wheel drive, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah.
There are some driveways that don't get plowed out because there are five roads.
Yeah.
Um, and trying to get in there, it's water, hit the ambulance start and we can just get a plow and sweep in through, take a path.
No.
Then you will get them.
I, I was, that's exactly why I, I, I think it's a good idea for him to have a plow.
And we expect all trucks with the, with the plow setup, uh, the snowplow prep package. So that if later on we decided we want to make the purchase of trucks already equipped, two vehicles take that plow on. That's why we're going to put it in dual alternators, spare battery, all that type of stuff.
Yeah.
So, so trying to make sure that's at the back.
Yeah.
So, so we'll bring it back to you with a recommendation and see what we want to do with it. Thanks.
Okay. How about the payable and.
So.
Payable and payroll warrant. The Hens made a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
You do. Second.
Second. We have a second down there. All right. All in favor? Crap. That can be shredded. Rest of mind. Crap, I can be shredded, rest of mine, no, oh, shred that one too. Now, if you're gonna go with a plow on your pickup truck, make sure whoever's gonna be driving it knows how to hook the plow up to the pickup truck.
Yeah, yeah.
Because some of those quick hitch plows are not so quick to hitch up.
Wait, I haven't read that the hard way.
Yeah.
I would say if you're gonna, if you do go with a plow, you wanna go with a stainless V.
Yeah.
Yes.
We have both types, V and a straight, when the straight plow can't get through.
Yeah.
I dropped my V and walked around the back.
It just makes a huge difference, yeah.
Wow.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah. You're smiling, that's what you wanted?
Uh, yeah, no, it's just something to talk.
Yeah.
We, we, we've already talked.
Yeah.
An experienced plow, well, dear experience.
Yeah.
Any experienced plow person with a V can have a real tough time and miss things over time.
Real tough.
Yeah, yeah. But you can use it as a step. I, I used a V plow as a complete novice, and I just used it as a straight plow, and it worked.
True.
So, more discussions.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else? Yes, Dan?
I got a couple of things, um, Keith, do we, have any update on the assessor, what's going on with the assessor?
Um, yeah, uh, I believe all of the uh, all the work is being completed, it's been viewed by the assessor. Um, the tables have been adjusted, um, I believe Friday, the um, the notices have been out to property owners, so you should be getting, um, within your bail, you know, very quickly came down into your property, um, there, there's two ways that you can contact Vision via phone to talk about it, and you can set up a time to meet the vision, um, and they will set up some time in this room, so folks can come in.
Can you make sure that we all have that contact info or workload?
We'll make sure we now email it to you all, so you have it.
Thank you.
Somebody contacts you personally, you should be given to it.
I, I have a feeling we're gonna be here in a crum-
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, in period, I talked to the assessor last week, appeared that she made a lay her, her departure.
That was my next question on the position.
Sometime in July, um, even though a lot of the numbers have been done, um, and she feels pretty confident that if she had him tomorrow, she probably, she had all the numbers, she'd have a value, though value's gonna be discussed, disputed by some property owners now, but um, we had to go make a commitment tomorrow, we had all the numbers, we can make a commitment, so.
How about the position itself?
That is a challenge.
Yeah. Does MNA have anyone who-
MNA does not have anybody, you have to look at private companies that provide those services. Uh, I have yet to hear back from them as to what that will be. Um, I sort of, I aced the holes that we do have, um, a resident who is a um, assessor in a different town, who is volunteering his time, he didn't, that, till we find somebody or get a contract. I've had two of those voters, one, one gentleman from South Portland is showing interest to help out if we need to, and the other gentleman uh, who lives in town is showing interest as well, so I think we're gonna be okay. I think that uh, the best is gonna be able to give us the numbers, and so we can send the commitment.
And when, when will we know exactly when she's leaving?
Uh, I think it's gonna be the, probably the middle of July.
Okay.
I would say, uh, at least that was for our last conversation.
At the next meeting, can you give us an update on where we stand with our CMP solar credits?
Sure.
And I know we wanted to settle the dust, but I'd like to get the Clearview Estates thing taken care of as soon as possible, maybe if we could put together a plan on what we're gonna do with that.
Put it on the agenda.
Anything else, any other business, anyone? Motion to adjourn?
So move, eight fifteen.
Second?
Second.
Yep, seconded by Chip, all in favor? Here we go.